Good evening and welcome back to the Selectmen's Meeting for Thursday, November 2018. Please stand for our pledge allegiance with our health agent, Vinnie Fontaine, we're leading us, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening again, everyone, and first I'd like to welcome our two new members, Karen Nyman and Mitch Penny. They both survived the harrowing election and just got their first taste of our executive session and they're already shaking in their boots. Anyway, welcome aboard both of yous. First thing is community announcements by the Veterans Agent, Vinnie Fontaine, about the Veterans Day Parade.
A couple of things we have going on this weekend. First off, at 11 o'clock on Sunday is the official 100th anniversary of the end of World War I. And the churches in the town will be ringing their bells at 11 o'clock to signify the end of World War I. And then at 1:00, we have our 65th Tri-Town Parade, and it's hosted by the Town of Abington. Was it first, first call is at 12:15 if you want to march. The parade starts off at 1:00. And then on next Friday, the South Shore Votec Senior Class is putting on a luncheon for all veterans in the Town of Rockland. It's going to be at 11:30 and it'll be held at the American Eagles Building. And all veterans are welcome. It's a free lunch, so.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is a public hearing, but it's not till 7:15, so we're going to bypass that and hang on for now until 7:15 comes. And we'll go next with the minutes. And I have minutes of an open session of October 16, 2018.
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
A second, a motion.
A motion and a second for the minutes of October 16, 2018, open session. All in favor? That's a three and two abstentions because you guys weren't here.
That's great.
The open session minutes of October 30, 2018.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? And that would be three, zero, and two. Now we have executive minutes of the executive session of October 30, 2018.
Make a motion to approve, but not be released until our mettle is settled.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? And that's a three, oh, and two vote again. Next on the agenda will be a one-day liquor license for the Memorial Library, 13, Thursday, December 13, from 5:30 to 7:30. Is there anyone from the library here? Oh, I see this young lady.
I'm the president of the Friends of Rockland Memorial Library, the Rockland Memorial Foundation, Inc. And yes, we have our, it's become a tradition now that we have this one, one-night liquor license for a special event at the library to thank our supporters and everyone who helps, helps out the friends to help the library. And so, so I will appreciate it if you'll vote in favor of that. And while I have the podium here, I'll say, this very Saturday, we have our fall book and bake sale at the library from 10 to 2, so stop on by.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Well, this is the pleasure of the board. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve for one day liquor license for the Rockland Memorial Library.
I'll second.
I got a motion and a second, all in favor? Thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Let's see, we still got a few more minutes. License renewals, number six.
Mr. Chairman, we have a list of licenses that we need to renew in the book, which Sue has told me I am supposed to read for all of you and you can approve them all unless you have a concern.
I'll, I'll read them if you'd like.
It's up to you if you'd rather read them.
Why not? The cameras are on us, I guess. So anyway, this, the motion would be approved pending all obligations are met. So we have all alcohol club, the Harmon Golf and Fitness Club, 168 Conker Street, the Fraternal Order of Eagles, 29 Park Street, and the Old Colony, VFW, 22 Church Street. And I'm going to just start with each individual heading and then we'll vote them. Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second to approve, all in favor? That's approved. All alcohol license, China Plaza, 35 Market Street, Rockland Golf Course, 276 Plain Street, and Rockland Bar and Grill, 323 Union Street.
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? That's a vote. Walt and my, and wine and malt package of Easy Mart, 2339 Center Ave., and Tonya's Deli, 246 East Water Street.
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? That's a vote. All alcohol package, Station Liquors, 21 East Water Street, Union Street Package, 328 Union Street, Fast Lane Liquors and Grocery, 924 to 926 Hingham Street, and Luke's Liquors, 167 Market Street.
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
Got a motion and a second for all alcohol package, all in favor? That's a vote. Carmen Vittler's license, Baking with Joy, 347 Center Ave., Vivy's Kitchen, 200 VFW Drive, Best Western, 909 Hingham Street, Tonya's Deli, 246 East Water Street, Deena's Pizza, 930 Hingham Street, Dunkin' Donuts, 21 East Water Street, Dunkin' Donuts, 147 Market Street, the Harmon Golf and Fitness Club, 168 Conker Street, Primano's Grill and Pizzeria, 440 Union Street, DeAngelo Sandwich Shop, 144 Market Street, Oriental Express, 8 Water, West Water Street, China Plaza, 35 Market Street, and Rockland Bar and Grill, 323 Union Street.
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
All in favor? That's a vote. Automatic amusement, Fraternal Orders of Eagles, 29 Park Street, Old Colony, VFW, 22 Church Street.
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
All, all in favor? That's a vote. Entertainment licenses, the Harmon Golf and Fitness Club, 168 Conker Street, Fraternal Order of Eagles, 29 Park Street, Old Colony, VFW, 22 Church Street, China Plaza, 35 Market Street, Rockland Bar and Grill, 323 Union Streets.
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
All in favor? That's a vote. Let's see what else we got here. In holders, Best Western, 909 Hingham Street.
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
Motion in the second, all in favor? Lodging, 92 Church Street, LLC, 92 Church Street.
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
Motion in the second, all in favor? Class one licenses, International Motorsports, 7 Market Street, Prime Volvo Cars, South Shore, 1030 Hingham Street, Prime Hyundai South, 1022 Hingham Street, and Hillcrest, 401 Beach Street.
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Zoning Enforcement Officer must approve before release, this is class two licenses, International Motorsports, 7 Market Street, Advanced Auto, 511 Plain Street, Supreme Muffler and Brake, 218 VFW Drive, and WCS Automotive, 1 Bishop Lane.
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
All in favor? That's a vote. All right, we're still running a little fast here, so we're going to bypass seven and go to number eight, because they're going to take a little longer. Number eight is to open the special town meeting, January 7, 2018.
Yes, I'd move that the board adopt the following resolution. So a fiscal emergency has been created by recent events involving the Office of the Town Administrator and the Town Accountant, both of which are currently vacant, and it's necessary to call a special town meeting to address budget shortfalls caused by those events. I'd move that the Board of Selectmen set the date for the special town meeting for January 19.
January 7.
January 7, 2019.
January 7.
Yes, please.
January 7, 2019.
Okay. So we've, you've done the first one already?
Yeah.
Okay, we need a motion or not?
Yeah, I just made a motion.
Okay. Got a motion and a second by Mr. Mullin. All in favor? Do we need a votes roll? Or just begin?
Okay, so we set the date of the special town meeting to be January 7, 2019, and that we'd be accepting all articles of an emergency nature for the period from November 8, 2018, until the close of business on November 16, 2018. Make a motion.
Second, that motion.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? That'll be good. Very good. Do we need to explain what we're going to do at the meeting? I'll let you talk for a minute.
Give it a minute, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under our charter and our bylaws, special town meetings are always supposed to be limited for urgency because of the situations mentioned in the resolution. We really don't have enough funds to get through the remainder of the fiscal year or even get to a May special town meeting. So the board has called for a special town meeting. We're opening the warrant effective tonight through close of business next Friday, which is, you know, the minimum is seven days. And again, any department that has articles of an emergency nature should submit those articles to the Board of Selectmen's Office accompanied by a statement that says the emergency nature of the article. So again, we're going to try to address this, you know, limit this town meeting to only the things that we need to take care of, and that's really consistent with our bylaws and our charter.
Very good. This all has to do with the, everything that went on this summer between the former employees of Forest Selectmen and employees of the Office of Administrator and the other one, yeah. What's it?
At a future meeting, the board will have to vote on the specific articles that you're going to put on the warrant.
Right.
And at that point, you know, you can discuss the merits of each article and whether in fact it is of an emergency nature and whether you want it to go forward on the warrant.
Very good. Excellent. Any more questions? Are we, we're good. Thank you, John.
Thanks.
All right, at 7:15, so we can go to the public hearing. I need a motion to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here from the liquor license transfer for Porter's Pub, 360? Here they come.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? That's unanimous vote. Come on up and introduce yourself, please.
Thank you. My name is Walter Sullivan. I'm a lawyer in Norwell, and I represent the applicant on this liquor license application. With me is the applicant Catherine Porter of the proposed establishment, which will be Porter's Cafe. It's operated as a single-member, single-manager LLC that Catherine Porter is the manager and member of. Ms. Porter has been in the beverage and food business for over a decade. She's worked at this current establishment for many years as well. This place is located at 363 Union Street. It has 2,400 square feet. It has a seating capacity of 74 and occupancy capacity of 87. There are five exits and three entrances. So they seek to continue the establishment the way it is. We have an asset purchase agreement with the, of the Someplace Cafe, and we hope to reopen as soon as possible. And we please answer any questions you have about our operation or about the manager.
Everybody sat there. The information in front of them, is there any questions on the board?
I have no questions, so.
Everything looks fine, yeah.
Then I need a motion to close the hearing.
I asked if there was any comments.
I'm sorry, is there any public input? To answer the public on this hearing, none or seeing none?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to close the hearing, all in favor? Motion on the, that's a, motion on the change?
I'll make a motion to transfer those licenses to Agent Porter LLC.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? That's a vote.
Thank you very much.
Best luck.
Wish you all the best.
All the best.
Good luck.
All right. Number seven, Southfield Redevelopment Authority update by Mr. Henderson, who's not here?
No, he's here.
He really is.
Yep. And Kelly O'Brien.
Kelly O'Brien, McKinnon. All right.
Hello, the Board of Selectmen, and again, Tom Henderson and Kelly O'Brien, your representatives on the Southfield Redevelopment Authority, appointed by you guys. And I appreciate having us up here. First, I want to thank Ms. Nyman and Mr. Penny on your election this week, this past week, and thank you, congratulations for stepping up. Thank you. So we just want to talk quickly about Southfield. We're going to have our executive director, Paul Nedzwicki, come up and make a presentation. Before we get to that, Dave Rubin is also here. He is the, from the Homeowners Association, and he's the joint appointee between Waymouth and Rockland for the Southfield Redevelopment Authority. So with Paul here tonight, Paul's background, we have a great asset with Paul as our executive director. Paul came to the SRA about eight months ago, and he came from the Cape Cod Commission. Before that, he was an assistant town administrator in the Town of Bonstable. He has a wealth of knowledge when it comes to land planning, design, in this, his knowledge in infrastructure like water, wastewater, and transportation is like no other. He's also an attorney, so he helps triage a lot of the issues that we have to deal with in the SRA and get it to the appropriate authority. So I'd like to bring Paul up, and he's going to do an overview of the Southfield project with, in respect to water, wastewater, transit, and then also things going on with L-Star that we've seen recently. So Kelly, if you had anything to add?
No, I think Tom said it all. We are really excited with Paul. He brings a lot of knowledge to the Southfield Redevelopment Authority, and I think as you listen to him tonight, too, you'll see he'll be the right person to help us move forward with the project. So Paul?
Paul.
Thank you, Kelly and Tom, and thank you for allowing me to introduce myself to the board this evening, tell you a little bit about Southfield Redevelopment Authority and where the Union Point project is right now. Tom did a great job on the introduction, so I won't bore you with any more of the background. We've really been working pretty hard since February to get the, to look at the SRA staff, the SRA budget, get that in line, and then to look at the relationship between the SRA as that public entity whose mission really is to make sure that development happens at Union Point in a way that benefits the three component towns. So that's our primary mission, is laid out in the legislation. That's what we try to do. Our functions that we have in order to do that, we are primarily sort of the regulatory permitting authority, zoning authority in the central business district. We are also the entity that any remaining federal property gets conveyed to us before it gets conveyed to the master developer. And we also have $175 million bond cap that was included in the 2014 legislation, which, if you read through the legislation, primarily appears to be there to support construction of infrastructure around the site. So those are our three main functions. So what preceded us as an organization was Tri-Town was a much bigger, bulkier thing. This is really sort of a streamlined, more of a straight-up redevelopment authority approach to the project, and I think that serves us pretty well. So we've worked, I've been working with the board for over eight months now, and I think we're in pretty good shape. The board is moving forward, and the project is in good shape, too. I, I really feel like the project's in the best shape it's been in to succeed. If you look at the opportunities, the infrastructure that's been built with the roadways and the demolition that's gone on and the residential development, there are 1,000 units now that have been constructed and occupied. So Union Point has a population of over 2,000 people, so it's now a community with a heartbeat. So that is all moving in the right direction. The economy is in good shape for this to continue. But we do this and we work to get all of this done in concert with a master developer. The master developer out there currently is L-Star, and I'm sure you've, you've read some of what's been in the press as it relates to the master developer. Our relationship with the master developer is really governed by a contract, which is known as the disposition and development, Development Disposition Agreement, the DDA. So we will, we are executing all the authority and doing what, what our responsibilities are under that DDA, and we hope, and that the master developer is also doing the same thing. So I'm sure some of that will come up in questions a little bit later. I'd be happy to answer anything that I can answer. But just as, to go back to the site for one minute, from the SRA's perspective and from my perspective coming up here, the site is in good shape. There's great opportunity out there. There's a tremendous potential benefit to the component towns. It does have some, some limitations as a site, and they are mainly based on infrastructure. It needs a permanent water supply. It needs a permanent wastewater solution, and it needs traffic improvement and improved east entry to the site, so that people can get directly to the site. There are pretty common sense solutions to all three of those infrastructure challenges. So much of what I've been doing and what the board has been looking at is how can we help the master developer to facilitate solutions to those three major infrastructure issues? And I think the master developer, in their discussions to date and certainly as they move forward, have been looking to do as much of, as they can on site. But I think as we've, we've begun this discussion, there are opportunities for the towns to benefit from this infrastructure, especially since the 2014 legislation gives responsibility ultimately for that infrastructure and roads to the towns. So there are opportunities, I think, in the future for us to work together on important infrastructure issues that could benefit both the site and the towns. And we had a great conversation with the chairman and Marcy a couple weeks ago, where we sort of talked a little bit about how we could potentially partner around infrastructure that is the right economy of scale that produces a mutual benefit. And so I hope more of that continues. So I think we're in good shape. I want you to know who I am. I want you to know that I'm available if you have any questions at any time, or just, I'm just right down the, right down the road there every day. And with that, I think I'd stop and really make myself available for any questions that you might have.
Mr. Mullin?
I have, oh, two questions. And number one, like, just in terms of, like, water and sewer, I mean, what, I mean, like, I know, like, water is a complex, because, you know, it's a, oh, like, a conversation and like a dialogue probably with other parties in other towns.
Yeah.
But what does, like, is, like, there like a path that's being pursued?
Yeah, I think there are two main paths on, on permanent water supplies. One would be the MWRA, potentially either coming through the Town of Waymouth or the Town of Braintree. And the second would be a private water supplier coming from the, the southern end of the site, which would, which might be the desalination plant and Aquarius Company that runs that right now. Hingham also has some water challenges, too. So we're trying to, to look at all of the communities that have some water challenges that are surrounding to find the most efficient, cost-effective way to provide reliable water that's of a high quality to the people in towns.
Who is authorized to negotiate with MWRA? Would that be the SRA board or would that be the master developer? SRA?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And that would be for the entire development, not just the Rockland, Abington, or Waymouth portions?
It's, it would be for the entire development. You know, a lot of the infrastructure now is divided. Each town is responsible for their own piece of infrastructure. As we go through the discussions, though, if there were, if it presented an opportunity for other towns to benefit from some of that, one of the things we'd like to, to immediately discuss is sort of a joint services agreement. And, you know, all of that's contractual, so none of it's mandatory, but to the extent that any of the infrastructure work that we do presents, or we think presents, an opportunity for any of the component towns, we want to come and have a conversation about that.
So with the recent issues with L-Star, do you see any, any issues with redevelopment in the Rockland portion, or any slowdown of development in the site?
There's been a lot of interest in the site in general, and so I think if a master, if we were going to have a problem with the master developer, it might be a good time to have a problem with the master developer. There's a lot of interest. There has been a lot of interest in the Rockland side from different developers. So I think you'll see more concrete proposals in the next 12 months that we'll be able to share with you on that.
But is it, is it true until the infrastructure gets straightened out, there really can't be any development there, correct?
Yeah, unless there were temporary arrangements, or if we just looked at the Rockland piece, if there were an opportunity to, to look at the Rockland portion of the Union Point site as a retail consumer of any additional water or sewer capacity that Rockland might have, then that might be possible, too. But that's all open for discussion and negotiation, and I think in some circumstances, extending infrastructure into the site could be beneficial for both the town and Union Point.
So how about the wastewater situation? Obviously, as a town where, where at capacity or even at times above capacity, we know that's a pretty large piece of land. What are the, some of the options there?
It is. One of the options, and the one that the master developer has focused on most to date, is to construct a treatment facility on site that could treat all of the wastewater and discharge it on site.
And would that be bonded through SRA and it would be just for Union Point, or would there be excess capacity?
Actually, there's been no discussion about bonding it through the SRA from the master developer. Which is always sort of raised a question to me. I mean, that's a lot. That's a $40 million outlay for a private company to be able to outlay that. You're not going to see a payback on that with enough flow for 10 years. Always kind of raised a question. The SRA could be part of something like that, and to the extent that the SRA was, we would look to see what the other needs of the towns would be, because that would be an independent facility that would be operating out there. So another option would be to, to look for MWRA capacity through the existing towns, but there are significant distribution issues in, through the towns of Waymouth and a lot of the South Shore towns as you get out to Net Island and then onto Deer Island. But I think we've, there's some progress on both of those. I think you will see a self-contained plant as part of the MEPA filing, and so you'll be able to take a look at that and ask any questions about that and whether that might be, provide some additional service.
Okay. I'm going to ask Karen, do you have any questions? Are you, are you done?
Yes, yeah, no, Mike.
And anybody else, any more questions?
So just on the transit side?
Yeah.
So, you know, obviously, you know, you've got the widening of 18. We've got the, the Delahunt Parkway in the Rockland area, and obviously neither one are ideal.
Right.
So what is, what is the plan for that? But is there also a plan to work with the, the T and the commuter rail to, to put additional services and trains? And would there be some type of internal transit going from the public transit to where, in the Rockland development? So if workers or whatever?
Right.
Be able to get there without having to drive?
Well, if you've journeyed through the site, you've probably seen the autonomous vehicles, golf carts or cars, whatever. So that holds the possibility down the road to be able to take people from where they live to the commuter rail. The frequency of the commuter rail is really going to be dependent on how many people we have living here and which direction they're going. If we get the kind of commercial development that we're looking for, the site's big enough that we could pull people from Boston to the site to work on robotics. We have people living here now that want to work in Boston, but the ultimate sort of goal here is to have people that can live and work on site. So transit is definitely part of that issue, and there has, there have been some preliminary discussions about the use of Bud Cars or smaller cars. That would be directly from Union Point to Boston, that would run in between the regular schedule of the commuter rail. The state's considering that option in other parts of the state, and we think this would be a great place to pilot that.
Let me ask you a question. There was a lot of noise about the heliport.
Yeah.
Nobody in town knew about the heliport allegedly, that it was put in there. You know, I don't care about the logistics. If it's, if it's there by right to do whatever they want, fine, but I just would like for our people, or you, to alert the people in the Town of Rockland that you're doing something.
Yeah.
So that we're not surprised about it. You know, last winter, I was down the south end of the thing, and I saw people digging, digging and digging, doing something down the south end of the, the airport on the runway. And I have no idea what it was, and I've never heard what it was. So if anybody knows what, what they were doing down there, I'd be happy to, to hear about it.
Yeah.
Because I was out there walking one day with the dog, and they had big machines down there, and they were moving concrete or whatever they were doing down there, and I don't know. Because I was going to quite discuss it, because quite frankly, it was beginning to get near spring, and, and I'm an outdoors guy, and I know a lot of creatures make their homes in that debris field, you know what I mean? And to take it up at that time- And to take it up at that time of year could destroy a lot of the natural wildlife that lives there. And I hate to see any fox pups or anything like that get killed, because we're more careful about what we're doing. So I don't know what happened down there, but I would be interested to find out. Doesn't have to be tonight, but...
Yeah, this, that's a good point on both issues, though. There is a lot of activity that goes out there. Ripping up the runways is a pretty labor-intensive job. Storing the vehicles, these are, these are issues that the towns have. They want to know what's going on, how long are the vehicles going to be there, where you're going to be ripping up the runways, where you're going to store the debris. All of those are valid questions. So I would invite anyone to call me, that would you have any of those questions? As it relates to the heliport, though, we have, even if it's temporary in nature, the fact that they're putting down, you know, something that looks of a permanent nature, in the future, I will notify the town that it's in.
Well, I just think that the assessor's office should be notified that you're putting in a heliport. I mean, it may not be very expensive. It may not be anything, but it's, you know, it means money to us if we're not getting tax money on whatever you people put in there. That's the whole purpose, is that's our property for us to tax as we see fit. And if we're going to put anything there, I don't care if it's a heliport or just a trash station, we want to get whatever economic benefit that could be from that to us.
I agree with that.
So that's all I really have to say. Thank you. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mary Parsons, I'm sorry, let me have a say here.
Yeah. Mary Parsons, 754 Union Street, Rockland. I was on the State Committee for the MEPA process with her, so there was a ton of information that, and plus, in the legislation, the proponent, the master developer, is financially responsible for water and sewer. The issues with water and sewer is that a private developer cannot get water from MWR-A.
Right.
They have to have a municipality or a municipality-like government to go to the MWA for them. They can pay that municipality, because they're financially responsible by law. The other issue with the MWR-A is it's a $19 million hookup fee for each town that may want this water. And as recently as, I think, last year, the MWA stands firm with it being each town that wants water is going to have to pay the entrance fee, because all towns that were on it had to pay the entrance fee.
Yep. We've had discussions with the MWR-A and the MWR-A Advisory Board, which also has to approve any sort of new communities that come in. And the entrance fee can be really large. They do allow you to spread that out now, almost like a betterment, over more than 20 years.
By bond?
Yeah. So there are ways that we can approach that, but it's still somewhat premature. But any negotiations with the MWA, that, the burden of that entrance fee is something that's on our mind, and we know that that's a, that's a big issue.
It would be nice if someone would get moving on that. It's been two years, the Waymouth agreement is up now, water and sewer. I think the best bet is to go MWR-A sewer, because the pipe rings are already there, they're already, the Waymouth side's already on MWR-A sewer.
Right.
DEP, there is limits to what you can do.
Right.
And I think it's a 300 gallon a day sewage treatment that can go through the pipes. Now, once you hit that, you can't build anymore.
Right. Well, we are, I agree with you. We need to get going on those three major infrastructure limitations. Water and wastewater are primary among those. So I hope we have something to put on concrete.
And there's one, a couple of other issues. There's currently reservoir pop drive in Hingham Street to be widened by the developer.
Right.
And the track is getting pretty bad there now. There's another issue with the...
We're not really going into all the different issues that are under the airbase today. We're just going to, we're hearing an update as to what's going on.
Right. Can I ask one question in terms of the health of the back? Where's the safety plan? That we need to know and enable.
Well, that's, you know, I'm sure that they'll come up with one, now that you mentioned it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, where are we? Number nine. Thank you, Tom, and Kelly. All right, we have a CDBG lien release. Wayne Darrell's people. Thank you, Mary. Anybody here from Wayne Darrell's?
Mr. Chairman, Wayne couldn't come this evening, so this is a lien waiver. You're signing off on a lien upon Wayne's recommendation, because the homeowner in question has met their obligation to the CDBG program.
Any questions?
This is pre-routine. I'll make a motion to approve in a second.
Got a motion in a second to approve the lien release by Wayne Darrell? All in favor? That is a vote. All right. Players' sports power request for early hours on Thanksgiving Day. Normally, every year, we get the Eagles and a few other social clubs say they want to open early on Thanksgiving Day, and we usually allow it for all establishments, as long as they contact the police and let them know that they're going to be open. So what is the pleasure of the board?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we allow for all establishments for early opening, 8:00 AM Thanksgiving Day, as long as they, to your point, contact the police.
I'll second that.
Got a motion in a second? All in favor? That's a vote. Town administrators report in correspondence.
I just have a couple of comments for the board this evening. First of all, Susan Ide, our executive assistant, and I would like to welcome the new board members and tell you both that we're looking forward to working with you, and we're here as a resource for you as you're learning the ropes and getting going. Please feel free to reach out to Sue and I for information and support. So welcome to both of you. And then I do have a short statement to read on behalf of the town assessor who couldn't be here this evening, that she wanted me to read for her. Town of Rockland Board of Assessors would like to announce that they are pending preliminary certification of the fiscal 2019 property values by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, Bureau of Local Assessment. This public disclosure is part of the revaluation and recertification of values that's required by statute. The public disclosure period began Wednesday, November 7, 2018, and will continue through Wednesday, November 14, 2018. Valuations are available in the assessor's office, at the Town Hall, 242 Union Street for public inspection, taxpayer review, and questions daily from 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM, except for Monday, November 12, when Town Hall is closed in observance of Veterans Day. The valuations are also available online on the Town of Rockland website. If anyone has any questions, they're welcome to contact the assessor's office, and their contact information is also listed on the Town website. Debbie is on vacation, so she asked me if I would just read that public announcement on her behalf. And then the last update I have for you this evening is simply that a couple of meetings ago, you voted to establish a Town Accountant Search Committee, and I wanted to let the board know that that committee has had two public meetings and has conducted a first round of interviews with five potential candidates, and the committee is reaching out to two prospective candidates as finalists, who the committee unanimously agreed are their two, are our two best choices, and we're hoping to have final interviews for you within a week or two.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right. Selectmen's comments. Mr. Penny.
So first off, want to thank everyone in the town that came out to vote. 7,600 voted, somewhere around there, which is tremendous. I also want to thank Donna and her staff. Had no idea what they, what they go through on a, on a day. It was unbelievable. I want to thank and welcome Kara aboard to the board, and I'm kind of glad it's over and that we can kind of go forward. I also wanted to talk about upcoming, Rudy Childs, who's a Rockland, Rockland guy. He did a film documentary, 21 Years of Folded Flag. It's actually going to be shown, was shown next week in a bunch of different venues, but it's actually going to be here in the auditorium at 6:30 at Rockland High School. So it's about the Fitz family that was MIA. So if you're not doing anything, next Thursday, 6:30 at the auditorium. It's actually won a couple of awards at some, some viewing, so hope everyone can make it out for that.
That would be the 15th?
That is the 15th, yeah.
Very good. Is that it?
That's it.
Ms. Nyman.
I just want to thank my family, friends, supporters, and the residents of Rockland for electing me to the Board of Selectmen this past Tuesday. I would also like to congratulate Rich on his victory. I look forward to working with all members of the Board of Selectmen going forward. I also want to thank the candidates who stepped up to run for the board as well. They all ran great campaigns, and I thank them for that, and I'm looking forward to working on behalf of you. My door is always open, my phone will always be on. If any residents have any questions or concerns, please feel free to reach out to me. Thank you.
Mr. Mullin?
I just would also like to welcome our Karen and Rich to the board. And again, I think everyone, we've been a crazy few months, you know, for the three of us, you know, our members who have a little more longevity and less hair than we did in May, but, you know, but honestly, the fact that we went through what we've been through, and, you know, we got our five people with the calibers and the, like, and the experience and, like, and the passion for Rockland and to help right the ship, the fact that we got our five people, like, we didn't, I mean, there was a lot of craziness, but, oh, you know, like, it could have been even worse. You know, like, and now we have our two new board members who, you know, I'm really excited about, and I'm looking forward to working with. On that note, one of the things that we talked about in May, you know, that it was really time to do anyways, back before all this craziness happened, is, you know, to really sit down, like, as a group, as a board, to determine our board expectation, like, board goals and priorities, and I think, I mean, I don't want to put more on everyone's plate for the end of this month, but we do have, like, a fourth, actually, we always have a fourth Tuesday, so that's nothing new, but, like, if maybe, like, we might be able to look at that data to see if we can have, like, a working, a meeting of the board, you know, like, so, like, we can work through, like, we can talk about expectation and goals that we all collectively share, and we can work with Marcy on for the foreseeable future. It'll help us be organized and help us really achieve what we're here to do in terms of just move the town forward, so that'll be exciting, and that is all I have.
Mr. Mullin?
Yes. So Mike, I think that's a great idea. I remember back in May, before all of this stuff came up, you and I were talking about that, and as a board, you know, we were coming prepared to present what our priorities are, and every, obviously, everything got completely derailed. I'll let you off the hook on the loss of hair comment.
[laughing]
You know, I, well, no, I mean, you have the same amount of hair you had then, you know, and I'll take that towards me.
Oh, go on, that way.
Yeah, 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 so I'm letting you off the hook.
There you go.
But as is customary, Mike always says exactly what I planned on saying. So again, just to reiterate what everybody's been saying, just Kara, Rich, welcome. At the start of all of this, I asked that everybody run a clean and respectful campaign. I think all the candidates did. I think you guys did a great job. You two prevailed, because I think you were very qualified, and we are lucky to have you guys on this board. I look forward to moving Rockland forward with you guys. And I will be having office hours on Tuesday, November 13, from 8:30 to 10:30 here in the Town Hall, for any residents that have any questions or concerns. That's it.
All right. The only thing I get to say is welcome to my new compadres here. We all know each other fairly well, and we should have no problems in getting along and expressing ourselves for the benefit of the town. Things are looking up. I understand, you know, everybody gets nervous about what's going to happen with former, former town officials and things like that, but, you know, we're working on a plan, we're getting it in place. We hope to clean up most of all our past issues, at least, at least employment-wise, by the end of January. There's a lot going on. We can't really talk about it, because the lawyers are involved, but just know that we're paving the way for this town to get up and running again and get rid of the dead wood, and on we go. There's an open meeting briefing by, the lawyer's going to give it to us, when is that, on the 19th?
6:00 to 7:30.
7:00 to 7:30. I hope everybody will attend, so that we don't have any more open meeting violations amongst the Board of Selectmen. There's no need to, and they're getting stricter all the time with who you can talk to and who you can't talk to, what you can say and what you can't say. So we have to be mindful of that, so that we don't have any foolish violations that people are waiting to jump on us for. Other than that, life is good. Thanksgiving's coming up in a few weeks. The football games are doing great. My son Larry got a great award in London. He received an award for, he's a president of the Division of Dow Chemical, and he's was listed as number eight ally for the LBGT community, and he's an ally because he promotes those people at work, and that they're useful people to, in the world, and that there's no place for discrimination against any workers in the, in the workplace. So, and that includes government and any other place where people work, so I'm very, very proud of him and my grandson. He gave a great speech in London to, I don't know, a couple hundred people anyway, and a couple of million around the world on television. And so all I can say is thank you to those guys, and thank you for everyone for stepping up, and let's keep Rockland going, and we're not, we're not appointing anybody. So that's it for me. Gentlemen, ladies?
Make a motion to adjourn on that, though.
There you go.
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor, Mr. Mullin?
Yes.
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 And yes.